Yeah.
We had.
I love.
I'm like, I get there. Things. But speak well.
I was gonna say.
Pretty much. Definitely.
That's mysterious images showed up on it.
Okay, did it start recording?
He is. Recording.
Okay, thank you. All right. All right, it is six o'clock, so we will now begin our work study session for March fourth, two thousand and twenty-four. Roll call, please.
Mayor he.
President.
Commissioner Banky.
President.
President.
Commissioner Roberts.
President.
Commissioner Miller.
President.
Commissioner Castleberry.
President.
Commissioner Gaus.
President.
All commission members present.
At this time, I will turn it over to our city administrator, Greg Elliott.
Uh, thank you, Mayor, and turn I am going to turn it over to our Parks and Recreation Director Jeremiah Davies, who have a whole slew of topics, uh, talked to you about, not necessarily in the order, but I put them on the agenda. Go ahead, go ahead.
Great, thank you, Mayor, commission members, good evening, uh, beautiful weather, so I hope everybody's taking this opportunity to get out in the parks, hit the trail, do a little something outside. Uh, but good evening, um, I obviously have a number of things for you. Um, I'm gonna switch up the Greg's order a little bit, didn't wanna crescendo right at the start, so we'll get the kind of boring housekeeping stuff out of the way first, um. As you know, the last few years, there's been a, a commitment by the commission to really support the efforts that we've been doing in our parks, um, and that's covered, covers a, a number of projects. One of the things, if you remember from last year's budget, we updated the disc, the baskets at the disc golf course, um, and those are dedicated folks that love the game. Super appreciative of the improvements that we've been making out there. And with that has brought more attention back out to Heritage Park, to the, to the disc golf course. And so one of the things that we don't have in place is a rate or a fee structure in the event that a private group, organization wants to come out and rent the disc golf course. Um, and as we've talked with many things the last couple of years, when we're restricting access to the public, we've established fees and rates for those types of scenarios. Um, and now we are starting to be confronted with the, with the scenario that a couple of groups want to put on, um, tournaments out at, uh, out at Heritage Park. So what I have in front of you on, on item number one right there is a rental rate talk, um. These fees are extremely comparable to surrounding areas. Uh, Ann Arbor, Celine, Chelsea, Toledo, all these different areas. And what we have in there and the reason you see there, so a four hour block, so the reason that's just not an arbitrary number thrown in there. In talking with local disc golfers in our area, going out there, talking to them quite a bit. A normal tournament, if they were to start at a shotgun start meeting, there's a handful of teams on all eighteen holes. They can be done roughly three, maybe three and a half hours, right? That's just kind of a normal thing. So we put this, uh, four hour block, um, for there, you see it's two hundred dollars, we're proposing for residents, three hundred for non-residents. However, if we're looking at a tournament that's much larger, we have an additional hour rate there of fifty dollars for residents and seventy-five for nonresidents. So, pretty straightforward. And again, this is one of those positive things, um, I was at the Heritage Park yesterday, went down to the disc golf course, it was packed, people were parked everywhere, so I got out. Just started talking to some of the players, handing out business cards, saying, hey, if you have ideas or things like that, feel free to contact me. Oh, well, very positive things, and again, they were super appreciative of the new baskets that are out, that we brought there last year. Um, the ones that were there previously have been over there for twenty years, so pretty old and run down, so, um. Just another good positive thing going on out of the park there, so in regards to the, to the rates, does anybody have any questions? Or any thoughts? If you're okay with that, we'd bring a resolution to, um, the next meeting to kind of put these on books.
Any expectation with, uh, trash, uh, emptying?
We, well, we have quite a bit of, uh, let's, so to your question, um, we do as part of the rental rate, that's highlighted in there, that they are responsible to clean up after themselves, um. They're really good out there, we have quite a few, uh, trash or stuff to set up out there, but again, it is in the rental agreement, so that obviously they're communicated expectations as well, so, but I'm not concerned with it. Good. Moving on, acreage pricing. This is stemming from, again, something that I've learned over the, of the last couple of years, um, with this kind of renewed attention on our parks. People are coming in droves back to the parks, wanting to use a lot, utilize our facilities. And one of the great things about it is we're starting to see scenarios where a group, an organization, a family, whoever it may be, wants to use a shelter. But with that, they want additional space, right? And so a normal rental rate is kind of the, the, the footprint is the shelter, wherever, whatever park it may be, right there. But to give you some examples of what we're seeing is, I'll use Island Park, for example. You come down the hill to your immediate rights, that massive field, about three and a half acres right there, right? If you ever go down there, there's always kids, families, people just doing their own, doing their own thing, right? Whether it's just walking around, sitting, playing catch, just a number of things going on there. What we're seeing is people want to use one of the shelters there, but they also want to put on events as well and use up some of that field, right? And so again, what that does, this gives us some flexibility, and that's kind of where I'm going with this, is that, you know, we're seeing our parks are being heavily used, but they need some additional space. Currently, we really don't, besides a shelter pavilion rental, we don't have anything to kind of address those types of needs, right? So some of these big events, besides taking up a shelter pavilion, it's also taking up large acreage, right? And it's restricting access to, um, folks, and so again, kind of wanting to get a handle on that, kind of addressing that. Couple of examples besides island, birpods. Birpods is heavily used. So we've had a couple, um, organizations, people want to do weddings, so there's the shelter there. But if you can think immediately to the north of that structure, there's those big stretches of grass, it's well maintained, taken care of. People sit there for shade and things of that nature, however, part of the rentals and some of the requests is people want to have the shelter, but also take up an acre or two with tents, just a number of things, right? It's really, we're kind of open to whatever, but again, we're confronted with a scenario where we don't have anything in place to kind of address that, right? And so that's what we're kind of working towards, and the other example is Heritage Park. So if you go all the way to the back, to the trailhead, when you start to make your exit, there's the Locust Shelter. There's that huge field right there, it's just shy of seven acres. Again, people coming in droves back to the parks, we're having different events that are kind of new. Remember the, uh, the mountain biking and a number of other things are starting to come out there. That field is a desired area, but it's also heavily used by the public. So what we're proposing and what we'd like to do, and again, these numbers are very comparable to other park systems, um, in the state, in our surrounding areas, is that this gives me flexibility to kind of identify an acre, whether it's two acre or three acres. And so what we'd like to propose is that per acre for a resident, it's thirty dollars for non-residents, forty. Those are for four hour blocks, again, we look at kind of an average, how long people have events, it's anywhere from one to four hours. Those are usually birthday parties, family reunions, things of that nature, however, once you get over anything over four, they really just turn into kind of an all day event. So that's what we kind of have a pricing structure in place there. And so to kind of put it in perspective, I have a little example for you right there, using the Locust Field back there. So if a city resident wanted to come out, use the Locust Shelter and put on an event using that entire field, obviously shutting down, um, we have that range right there, which would be two hundred and eighty dollars, uh, four twenty for a non-resident, and then obviously you see the Saturday and Sunday, uh, right there. Going back to that acreage pricing, again, we, we feel like there's a ton of value there, um, in regards to maintenance of one acre of grass, mowing at the overhead. You know, one of the big back wings, they could knock an acre out, um, thirty minutes roughly, so there's not a whole lot of overhead in regards to taking care of maintaining those acreage, those acres and acres in general, so really, again, this is people coming to the parks, they're seeing that we have a lot of space available, but again, we don't have a structure or, or a fee in place to kind of address some of these unique situations that we're starting to be confronted with, so that's kind of what we're doing. And again, these prices, very comparable, if not better, than a lot of park systems in the area, and so that's what we kind of have a, a tentative, uh, price there for you to, to think about. Um, and if you look at that diagram right there, if you go back there, the trailhead does wrong, so the, so the trail starts, weaves its way through and runs along, so that's what those red marks are, we obviously would mark that off, we would want, um, an event to close that part of the trail down, so we kind of marked that off, so right there, um, is, is roughly seven acres, so.
So if somebody wants to use the shelter and needs to take the, the whole seven acres.
They don't have to, no.
So how do you subdivide it?
So we can easily go on our GIS system and kind of carve out what an acre is. So this is one of those things, this gives me flexibility to, we do all the time, meet people on site for different events and talk about the type of space that they need. So what we do is, once they identify an area, we can simply measure it off and kind of go, and then we could use that rate, so they wouldn't have to use that whole seven acres. But again, in regards to this particular situation, most of the events and the people that have reached out want to use that entire seven acres, right? So it's kind of one of those unique things, um, there's a few requests to where it would take maybe an acre or two right around, uh, the pavilion itself, but most of the inquiries in regards to the Locust Field have been the entire seven acres, however, but again, that's why we kind of put that pricing, um, structure in place, because again, if we're talking island, there's three acres to the right, birpods, there's a number of acres, and there's just different areas within our park systems where, you know, it's underutilized uh, space, and so we want to kind of get people using those, and again, be, being creative, uh, while we're doing it.
How does this balance out for pay to play versus your typical family that just wants to go to a park and have a picnic, but now they're restricted to where they can picnic or not?
So you're saying while an event's going on?
Yeah, so.
So that's why we have a, 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 a structure in place, right? We, because again, at any time, anybody is more than welcome to come to the parks and use, right? There, there, you don't have to pay, you don't have to do any of that. However, again, why we charge is because people are paying for their time, right? So if there, there could be a situation where a group or organization has an event going on, obviously that space would be limited, that's why we are charging. However, if it's just open at any time, you can free up the park to, to do a picnic of that nature. Is that it's your question, is that, or?
Yeah, I'm just concerned, so, you know, here's a family, you know, getting together with a group of people, they want to picnic on Sunday, and, uh, they got their hopes set up on the spot, and hey, meet here at Locust, uh, Field, and they show up at Locust Field, and, you know, it's, um, restricted by a non-resident group that rented it.
Well, that's been happening for years.
And that's why we charge, that's why we're really trying to, because that does happen, right? And, and we, we've always said, if we're going to limit access, there has to be a fee, and so that's why we're trying to price it that in the event that someone does resident or does rent it, there is value at this, at the city resident price, but if you're a non-resident, you are gonna pay considerably more because you are restricting area to one of our city parks, so that's why we kind of.
Well, if you want to be sure you get that space, then you rent the Locust Shelter.
Is there any advanced notification, like, uh, signage that, that this will, how does it person know?
So we have, we have a live Google Calendar with all the parks, so any event at any time, you can go to the website, you can pull up the, the park's calendar, and it sits right there. And the minute that someone does make a rental, um, my office assistant Cindy immediately puts it on there, that's kind of again, one of those expectations. So at any time, you can go on and see what's going on in the parks, you can go on it tonight, and actually, we've been, she's been selling a ton of rentals the last couple of weeks, so the, the calendar is just starting to fill up already for, for the summer.
Does the public know to go to the website and look at the calendar? I mean, how, how are we letting the public know?
We put it on our Facebook, we, we, we have these conversations, um. You know, I guess that's kind of one way, one way to market it, if there's another way to push it out there, but within regards to the Parks Department, um, we do put signage of, starting on Friday mornings for the weekend, so we do have things marked. Um, and again, we do, we post quite a bit of stuff on our Facebook page, um. So, but that's something to, to, to think about, another way to market, um, whether we use the city Facebook page or different other things like that. We do let residents know, and that's a constant push, we do put signs up Friday morning indicating that there's events going on this weekend.
This looks great. Makes sense. Exactly what we need to do. Right.
And again, this really gives us flexibility, right? This, like I said, just the overwhelming response and people coming back to the parks. We're just confronted with these different scenarios, and we don't want to stifle people using the parks, but we need to have something in place, um, as opposed to allowing a group just to come in, spend fifty-five dollars on a shelter rental, but shut down seven acres and restrict all that access to people for fifty-five dollars. Just, that doesn't happen anymore, so that's why I've been kind of focusing on this, and we've worked on this. Okay, moving along. Um, obviously, we took over the pool last year, and one of the things that's, one of the groups that utilizes the pool are the YMCA Wave Runners, it's a longstanding group that has utilized Bon Poole, um, in the summer. Um, previous to us taking back control of the pool, they use the pool, uh, uh, no fee, but since we've been kind of taken back over, we've been starting to address, um, those things. Um, last year, obviously, we had some mechanical issues with the pool, we didn't open on time. And without the boiler, the temperature was, was on, and so the Wave Runner's swimming team, obviously, they start very early in the morning, the pool temperature was a huge concern, so what they did is they ended up signing a contract with Adrian Public Schools to use the pool there. They would like to come back to the pool, and if you remember, very recently, you approved the purchase of a new boiler and a pump, which is on order and will be completed, um, this spring, and so the YMCA has reached out, and they would like to come back to Bon Poole. And so with that, um, working with Adrian Public Schools, the athletic director and, uh, the folks there talked about what they charged last year, and so they came up with what they thought was kind of a really, a favorable rate for the YMCA, and what it was, was a hundred dollars. And what it was, was a hundred dollars per day for practices. Plus the cost of the lifeguards that had to be on duty. Um, and so this negotiated rate is something that we'd like to adopt. With that, um, to give you perspective, so when I say a hundred dollars per day, they're not using the pool all day. They would roughly use the pool from about seven thirty in the morning until eleven thirty, because we're going to expand. Public hours this year. Normally it's been one to six. I just don't feel like that works for us. So we want to expand hours and give. Uh, residents, kids, more opportunities to get to the pool. So we're going to start opening at noon this year. Stay open a little later. So with that, they would use it early in the morning and then a couple nights a week. They would use it in the evening, once public swim was all, all done. In addition to that, they do host a couple of meets. They have hundreds of swimmers from all over come in. Um, and again, this is kind of adopting uh, what APS did. Now. You're saying, talking about this, we do have a normal private party rate they adopted last year. If we were to use that rate, that would cost the YMCA about five hundred dollars a day. Right? And so that's obviously restricting access and that's using the pool and shutting it down. Um, but what we're proposing is they're going to use it during non-public hours. We'd set those rates, like we covered uh, to give you a little idea. They use the pool at Adrian Public Schools twenty-nine times last year. So you do the math. So. We are covering our cost and generating some revenue um, for that. Um, and in regards to that swim team. About eighty-five percent of them are Adrian kids, whether they're Adrian. City residents and or Adrian Public School students. So what the entire team is, 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 it's open to Lenway County students. They do have a handful that do participate. Um, but I think that's a fair price. Um, again, none of this restricts any public access. This is during off hours.
Yeah, I think that's great.
Well, their meats are restricted. Yeah.
So we put a cap on, so. I'm sorry?
Unless they change the time of the meat.
So if you look at that price, that we're going to adjust it. So they told me there's going to be two home meets that would go to one o'clock. And so that's why there's a little bit of a, a surplus charge. That there would be two different days where there would be a delayed opening of one hour. So that's why I put that, that rate on there. So while we're on the pool, real quick, just wanted to give you an update again. The, the boiler, the pump, all that's been ordered. It's on its way. Um. Purchased a brand new vacuum already that arrived. We ordered new furniture, um, ordered two new brand new basketball hoops for the pool. If you've been down there in the last few years, it was a pretty janky setup. We've got two really cool clear backboards um, that coming in. Uh, also the collaborative, you remember we bring on that consulting firm, architecture firm. They have already started the process. They've been in there. Peeling the ceiling open, looking at um, every section of the, of the pool, working on that, that plan with us. Um, and I actually meet with them later in the week to start discussing. Public engagement and how we're going to handle that and all those types of things. So that's full speed ahead. Uh, we've already started hiring staff. Um, it's going to take us about. Thirty-five to forty people to keep Bon Poole running. So we've got a lot of kids coming back from last summer. And I do want to credit Adrian Public Schools. They are certifying. Nine high school students to be lifeguards for us this year. So they. Put it as part of the curriculum, so it's free for those students. I went spoke to them um, a couple of weeks ago. Gave them my card and say if you're interested, please email me. All nine of the kids emailed me within twenty-four hours. And so they've been to contact with Cindy. Getting paperwork, getting all the things we need to be ready to open up this summer. So we're full speed ahead um, in the process of planning to open Bon Poole. So all good things. Excited about this summer. Any other questions or thoughts in Bon Poole? Right.
Pardon? Hundred three state, or one states, right?
He's gonna be one of our lifeguards.
Email.
Or the YMCA.
For the YMCA. No, but she goes from, she goes to Adrian Public Schools. So, and I, she was, she was way under some.
Moving on to section four here. Um, Michigan DNR Recreation Passport Grant. So this is the grant that's available to us every year. And what it is, it's really to focus on current or existing. Um, facilities and or the desire to build something new in regards to recreation. What this is, it's a hundred and fifty thousand dollar max. Um, but with that, on approval and acceptance of the grant. There is a twenty-five percent required match. Um. What we're proposing, and I'd like to submit this grant uh, this month. Um, we would like to address two spots out of Heritage. One, a potential bathroom facility at the pickleball courts. We do use two um, ADA compliant uh. Porta johns, but they sit in the exposed sun and. I started playing this summer and you step inside there. I'm not exaggerating. It's a hundred plus, right? So we've had some issues. With folks who just started to overheat and we'd really like to um. Obviously, if you know, we talked about this before, the courts are super successful. People are out there morning, night. We'd like to potentially add to that by putting up a pavilion with a couple of bathrooms and some tables to give people shelter, shade. And the opportunity to kind of gather together. And this was one of the things when we were going through the grant class. Is that the DNR really emphasized with recreational facilities, we want to see bathrooms. We want to see gathering area where people can come together. Not just participate in whatever athletic event it may be, but just come together, you know, break bread, if you will. So that's one of the things. Um, that they really highlighted. And this is exactly what we're trying to push. And also. Um, down at the softball fields, we have the open session stand and bathrooms who are running out of life as we speak. So that would be the other target area upon uh, the acceptance if we were approved. For this grant. So that's what we're kind of working on. Um, again, there is a twenty-five percent match, um, but however, this wouldn't fall if we were accepted. Until the twenty-five, twenty-six fiscal year, so budget for it then. Um, but before I submitted this, wanted to get the commission's first approval and any thoughts um, on this?
When's the application deadline?
April first. So we're essentially done with it. We just needed. To, to get approval here and get a resolution on the next meeting.
We've been talking about bathrooms since I've been a commissioner.
Yeah.
Go for me.
Yep.
That's a great second step for the pickleball area. Is there a consideration to apply for uh, grants or asks with. Juanes or Rotary or to raise that uh, part, the part of that?
There's been, there's been conversations, really wanted to kind of exhaust this because it is a kind of a. Can be a pricey item, but yes, we've had those conversations. We'll know by late summer on this, this grant. Um. And if it does fall through, then obviously continue to explore.
No, I, I meant for them to help cover that thirty seven.
That easily could be a conversation, yes. Have I had that about the, the match? No, but that's it. That's going to be the conversation.
Good.
All right, get all the boring stuff out of the way. So one of the cool things about going to different conferences and, and trainings that I go to every once in a while. You kind of expose the different things going on in different park systems. Um, also just visiting, then you see cool stuff. I get ideas and things of that nature. Um, and one of the things that I saw in Sterling Heights back in the fall. Led to an email that I got from Lisa Eck. She reached out. She's from the ISD. And she wanted to talk about storyboards potentially in her park. Storyboards, and I'm not going to. Steal her thunder, but these are in parks everywhere. They're really fantastic. I'm just going to stop talking. I'm going to let her explain what it is. And then I'll kind of come in at the end to let you know how we would support this uh, this initiative. So I'm going to introduce Lisa Eck from the ISD.
I am Lisa. I am from Lenway Great Start. We are under the ISD umbrella. Um, but we are a statewide nonprofit. So every county in the state of Michigan has a great sort of collaborative. Um, this year, our, our vision and mission is um. To really ensure, help ensure that all kids start school healthy, safe and ready to succeed. And we do that in a wide variety of ways. And in your um, folder on the one side is all of the different projects. And um, things that we have going on in the community for families. Um, so you can take a look at that. At your leisure. But what I'm here to talk about tonight is the story walk proposal. So this year, we, on top of our. Regular um, operating funds, we got a significant literacy grant. And so we approached another collaborative um, that is in the UP actually. And they've put in some of these story walks. So these pictures are not our story. They are from the UP. But um, I approached. Uh, the, the city and Jeremiah and um, Cindy, we met with this um, and talked about. The possibility of putting in a story walk at one of the parks. Our grant will cover the entirety of the project. Um, it covers everything that we would need. The only assistance that we would need, Quinn and I really thought that we were going to be able to do this ourselves and put them in, but I don't think that's feasible. So. We had talked to um, Jeremiah about the, the possibility of having some help installing this. Um, we have three other locations that are putting in story walks. I actually just ordered my first set of the stands for Morenci. They're putting one in their park um, in town. Um, I'm presenting to Bliss Field next Monday. Promedica is putting one um, by their trails by the hospital and then hopefully here at um, Island Park is what we kind of talked about. Um, so this would be a permanent, permanent structure. Um, they would be cemented in. We would be responsible for changing out the stories. Um, probably we talked about maybe every six weeks, maybe not as often during the winter months. We're hoping that people still use them in the winter, but we wouldn't change out the story as frequently. Um, we have a whole list in your packet. There was a list of frequently asked questions. Um, one of the topics is obviously um, any repair costs for any damages that happen. So we will plan to build that into our normal operating budget for going forward for any repairs. In the communities that we've talked to about this, um. Really, the only issue that we have, that people have ran into is the acrylic piece that goes on top. Um, I can purchase individual acrylics through where I ordered the stands from, but I'm also assuming I could get someone locally. To make it maybe for a cheaper cost. But we are planning to um, to budget that into our operating costs. Going, going forward. So um, any questions?
How many extensions would there be?
Yep. So a typical children's book would be um, thirty-two pages. So that would be sixteen stands. We talked about. The possibility of eighteen. So it would be kind of an introduct- introductory, introductory stand. And then maybe a stand at the end to kind of wrap things up. Other counties have done. Like QR codes where you could scan to let us know that you went through. The um, the story walk or a selfie and tag the city, whatever. Um, but we talked about the options are sixteen or eighteen.
Right.
Is the age group, is it geared towards that pre-K? Is it, will it move around? Like maybe it's a toddler. Type story, then it's a preschooler type story?
Yep, it's a wide variety of stories. So we have um. There are many lists out there of books that work well for story walks. So we have already started ordering those books. We've started deconstructing those books. Cause they have to all be torn apart, laminated, all of that stuff. So we are already in that, in that process. Um, with, with other sites. Yeah. So it would be, it would vary, you know, like preschool through everything. Yep.
Targeted areas you're talking about, um, we went to a number of different parks and really kind of thought this out. Um, the reason we settled on Island is because we have the big playground system down there. And so we went down there, uh, myself, some of my staff. We met Lisa, one of her colleagues down there. We kind of mapped out. What we would like to do is do kind of a large outer edge of the uh, playground down there and would work really well. Um, and obviously it's kind of geared towards those children that are using. The playgrounds and stuff. So there's weber. But again, I've seen this in, in a number of parks all over. It was actually, there was a presentation. Uh, to conference or training I went to back in the fall. So it was really kind of cool to hear that, hear something new that's going on in the parks. And then shortly after that, uh. See contact with the same ideas. So I think it's a fantastic. Addition to the parts and as you mentioned. You're okay with this. Our support is the city. It's my staff who went out there. We could knock this out one day. We're literally just auguring a hole. Putting a four by four in there, putting it in there. We had this knocked out today. This would be. Um, minimal for us. This should be done in no time. So that would be kind of our support and then going forward. Um, we will stay in touch with these uh, under regards to changing stories out. It worked. We had an issue with one of the stands.
You uh, you select the book or is it any book that can be uh, chosen or?
Um, I think it can be any book. I have really just kind of went off the, when ordering the books, I've went off the list that have already been out there. For story walks. But for example, Morenci is really coordinating it with their libraries. So I've got to their libraries right there. Um, and so she already has ideas of books and she wants to coordinate with events at the library. So it really does not matter. It just has to be a specific number of pages is all.
I, I would maybe suggest the Cops and Kiddos, which is set in Adrian, written by Nick Rikoki and Joe Kelly. And there's uh, kind of highlights the, the service end of the police department here in uh. Uh, Adrian and then also backed by Quincy Nera, which uh, highlights the uh, Hispanic heritage of Adrian as well.
Yes, that would be awesome because I know the, the UP, when I talked with them, they really um. They have one, they are multi-county. So um, they have partners who kind of switch out the books where we're just obviously Lenway. So we can do it ourselves. But they partnered with different. Um, like the Native Americans and they go and switch out the store, their story walk and put in books that are related to their culture. So that's a great, that's a great um. Um, option and I will definitely look into those books for sure.
There's a suggestion, maybe, you know, beginning or ending. People.
Yep.
Um. Parents might think, oh, they did it once. They were not going to go back. Just I. You might have already thought of this, but making sure they know that it's really going to be rotating in and out, you know. Check back in a couple of weeks.
Yeah, I think they want to book. Yeah, that's a good point. And there's definitely, if you can see in some of those pictures, because again, they're not our pictures, obviously, but. We also um, use the talking um, as teaching um. Kind of, it's not really a curriculum, but messaging kind of thing. And so there's plenty of space on the outside after you put the book in there to put something like that. Or when we market it on our social media, or when they market on social media, we can definitely put that out there for sure.
Right? Great.
Thank you so much.
Any concern about vandalism?
I, I, I mean, that's. That's that looming thing that's always out there. My, my hope is that here's another upgrade, another positive thing that we're putting in the parks that. It doesn't become uh, an issue. I, I'd like to think that it is going to be fairly exposed, being right around the playground, that that won't be an issue. Um, but it is, you know. Until it happens, you know, I can't say for sure, but again, I'm, I'm positive and I'm realistic, but I think it's gonna, I think it's gonna be okay.
I'd order a few extra.
Yeah, yeah. And one county did tell us that someone did back into theirs. But they were able to straighten it and had no, like, there wasn't any, like, permanent damage where they had to replace the bull's hand. I'm hoping that that doesn't happen in Island Park, but. Um, but again, we're going to make sure that we have those extra costs covered in our grants before the future if. You know, who knows? Who knows?
Yeah, because the ones on the trail that have been in the sun a lot, they get very yellow and they're hard to read.
Yep. And that is one of the suggestions is that the fading and the acrylic does to get some. Um, damage from the sun, which we have, we know are in our.
And you can think of a spot though, that is kind of a shaded area down there. So that's another standard that we've talked about. That way it's not sitting out just exposed. So I'm. That's kind of addresses, because there's tons of shading canopy right around the playground area. So I think.
Thank you.
No, I hit you with the lots. Is there any other questions or thoughts or? Take an address for you before I turn back over?
Do you know, I have one question that's not on this, but. Do you know, um, I know Jasmine's voice, it was during COVID that they got donated. But big communication signs for like children that um. Are disabled. Yeah, well, it's just, it's called the communication board. They were metal and they donated like three of them. And uh, those are up. Do you know what parks they're in?
Uh, I know Island for sure on the top.
I, I know Island had one. I didn't know what else.
I'm not sure we put the other one at the check and staff.
Okay. Uh, I know one thing that they uh, brought up not too long ago was just that, you know. Uh I know one thing that they uh brought up not too long ago was just that, you know, they would love to see them in every single park eventually. And like, if that is something we could look at, purchasing, they're not very expensive, you know, I even said I would buy one from them and um. But I don't know how many more we need, um because I don't remember, I don't remember if it was three, five, I can't remember how many. I'm the one who delivered them because she brought them to me, but um. Uh I was just curious because I just think that's another really good piece, because I know a lot of feedback I hear a lot of times at the parks. And Lisa, I talked to her about it last week, was just getting more inclusive. If if it's a sensory wall, if it is, it doesn't have to be big. It doesn't have to be some big huge piece of equipment, but the more we can add, just little bits. Of the parks, the better. And that's, that's an easy piece right there, sure.
Thank you, Jeremiah. Being a good schedule here. So I want to talk to you about naming rights from the South County tunnel. Uh you all, I think, heard me talk about how a private partner is. Also to endow the uh maintenance of that. We've worked through the calculations on that, so they've been a lot of goose actually. With you that worked as well. I uh the number, yeah, and we had a maintenance schedule from the engineers, which um. We used as the basis for what we needed in any given year. The idea is at the end of a hundred years, then this fund would grow through replacement cost of the power. So that number, as it turns out, is a hundred and seventy thousand dollars. Want to pay a hundred and seventy thousand dollars, but ask the question, do naming rights come with that donation? And now asking you that question, uh and if that is so. Is there any kind of a process that you would like me to go through in? Allowing others the same opportunity. My sense is, nobody is going, else is going to offer us a hundred and seventy thousand dollars to name the pedestrian tunnel, but. Also it's not outside the normal. Contemplation that that could happen, so. Throw that out there for your thoughts on the matter. Uh we do want to get it done relatively quickly. Because we don't want to sign the maintenance agreement with M dot until we have the endowment in place. We can't get a permit from M dot until we sign the maintenance agreement. Do we have a policy already here? We have a policy that was written by a former commissioner at the time that someone was trying to name. An alley. And that policy, so that's probably pretty close to five years old now. Because no one has ever availed themselves of that policy. I would suggest it's because it it creates such high barriers to. Um applying that no one ever will avail themselves of that policy. Requires two hundred signatures of registered voters. It has a very high application fee, I think six hundred dollars. Other criteria that, like I say, I think are are pretty steep barriers to entering. Or barriers to access to that. And so that might be something you want to think about as well. You know, in terms of whether you want to revisit that at some point, but in this case. My sense is this is way out of the scope of, you know, what that policy contemplated. Did I contemplate? Someone negotiating a payment to the city of. Close to two hundred thousand dollars. Yep, that was, you know, you can do it for free if you don't need those costs. Listen.
The school district had a naming process that was uh in place. And I think the the one piece that was nice about that was there was a. A timeline, and most recently, probably heard this on the radio, that they're renaming um Nelson Field. And there's a sixty day timeframe from when it's announced to when it's adopted by the school board. Really there, that's the opportunity for the public to come forward to say, I got an issue if it's named after a specific individual. Because um individuals really become, you know, polarizing at times. As much as we might think they're great on one topic, you know, we, Joe Pullen's courtyard, that's dedicated to him. So a concern that came forward to. So, you know, as great as a person is, someone also might have a beef with someone. So I think that having enough time in place from this is being introduced, this is being considered. And then any considerations that come forth, we need to know about in terms of. Yes, we're gonna, you know, approve this or deny this based on that. Because it does, does create uh a lot of concerns if it's specific to an individual. Or I'm not sure business wise or what, if it's a individual or a business.
It's been done in the past, and we have Fee Park and the Fee Estate, right?
Uh, yeah, I don't think the fees bought the park, the name of the park, but. In recognition of what they did. I think in this case. Uh if we were going to move forward with this in a timely enough manner. What would have to be the case is that the payment would be in exchange for. A mutually agreeable name, like we, they would kind of have to trust the process. We would not veto on any of that. Process of determining whether or not the proposed name is acceptable to the city commission. As opposed to. Like going through a process like that. The the payment would be in exchange for naming rights, but the name is subject to.
I I have no problem with, I shouldn't say I have no problem with this. This is a, a pretty extensive. Endowment and it's very, uh I think I was the only one on the commission or in the room, actually. When that naming rights policy was going through the revision in place, Gordon, you might have come in. Seems longer involved than that. And I certainly never had thought that someone would ask to donate that kind of money. To name a project, at least not that then, that's not what I. It's not what I contemplated. So. I do think we should revisit that policy if we haven't looked at it, and we can ask for it in four or five years. I mean, all policies should be. Every year, just to make sure that they're in line with the current commission and the current sentiment of the community. Um but if this isn't something that is working for the community, then yeah, we should revisit it. But it sounds like we need to do one thing to get to another, to get to another.
Well, I think you guys, you know, could be timed where we would like to separate the place from.
Yeah, right. I'm in the room.
I'm just saying, this is well, way out of the scope of what policy, policy, you know, the easy way to distinguish it is like. Policy didn't contemplate paying, paying a fee to name. The city agreeing to name something, this and that, based on. You know, the sort of expression of public support that a sponsor was able to bring forth.
Again, I would stress, I would just not like to hear about it for the first time in a pre-meeting and then walk out there and vote on it afterwards.
We don't have it on the agenda.
No, I meant, but so I don't have an aim. Um so, you know, if there's, if it's, you know, it's going to come forward at the next pre-meeting. That, you know, the information's discussed at the next pre-meeting, we have our meeting, it's not a topic, and then it comes up. First one in April.
No, like I say, I think the the sponsor here would have to trust your process. To endow the um the maintenance fund. Understand that they're going to go through a process that relates to the proposed name. Well, but at the end of the day, they will be the one proposing names and ultimately something. This is, this is nothing new. I mean, we're getting an endowment that helped with this structure for years and years. It's everything that's happened on the campuses in the, in our city. There's fifteen or twenty buildings on the campuses that are named certain names because of the endowment that was involved with getting those buildings built. And getting those buildings maintained. And of my forty years of experience at both universities, I never went through any committee to talk about whether I liked it or not. I just found out what the name was. When they put it on the wall because they gave the money to help make this project possible. And I, and I, I just have to trust that as the process goes through with us, that we have a um a good sense between us. Be able to say, yes, this works. I think we need to not hold up the process. Move this along. We'll probably bring back a resolution next time. Of the oats that we've discussed. Right, a little on here. So we will recall our discussion about. Uh revolving law or a pre-development loan to further. The redevelopment of the Dixie Hospital, so you can, Scott Gibson is here tonight, uh who presented to the. Virtually. So we've, I am working with Burke, we've come to the conclusion that the Brown, as I mentioned last time. That the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority is the vehicle for allowing that to happen and. Pointed up new members to the B R A last time, so ready to start meeting, but. He doesn't have the funding that it would need to actuate that sort of a loan. And so I do have a resolution of, I given time constraints, that he would. Provide funding to the B R A to continue to make a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. It had some money already in it, it had a hundred thousand dollars in it, so giving ourselves fifty thousand dollars extra to play with. By expenses, but uh the idea would be that we will. Put the money into a fund for the B R A and then the B R A has to begin meeting and come up with policy for. Bring to Lawrence money, uh which will of course be constrained by statute, which governs such things. There's only a limited universe of things that. Brownfield Authority can use and afford, but this is what, within that universe of things. They will come up with that policy in. I'll see walls and include what rises to the level of the project, but if they're a useful part. But uh before that, if it can happen, they need the money. So that's what we're about. Tonight, if you're in a court, then uh we don't usually like to put things on the thing agenda if there is. An emergency meeting that's done, that the project's going to stay on its time. When's the party meeting? We are proposing to meet next week, Thursday or Friday, based on scheduling and the numbers. Well, we'll follow that, uh and so that is I, the regular John Van Alson. While that come there, I will turn it back over to, well, I guess I'll ask if anybody else has another. Anything else they want to talk about, we have not nine minutes left.
All right, at this time, we will open it up for public comment. Just to reiterate, there's a three minute time limit. And for the record, please state your name and full address. We will start inside the city chambers first. When we have exhausted all public comment inside the chambers, I will then open it up to all Zoom participants.
Hello, my name is Peggy Lanwitz. I'm a resident of uh Warwick County's people. And I've been absent from these meetings because my second job, I've got to stay up. Come to a couple of these meetings, but I've seen some talk about installing cameras in our public parks. Um I'd like to kind of talk about that. Uh as an electrician for thirty years, I've installed these systems. And I have some familiar with it, familiarity with it. Um I got a, I got a couple of concerns, like three of them, for example. My uh big deal uh is, is just the administration of these systems. When we put it in, you know, we spend hundreds of thousands of dollars and unfortunately, they don't administer themselves. Whenever there's an incident, um somebody alive out, I sit there and review the video. And it's been my, you know, took an, you know, somewhere between one and four hours to get a clip of for an incident. Uh you know, off a surveillance system, even with the newest technology available. Somebody, you know, there has to be real manpower behind these camera systems to administer them. The other issue is, is uh, you know, what is our, what is our coverage of those parts? For example, who says, and I've seen this happen because I've had to deal with it, who says we're not going to have somebody vandalizing the cameras? And I've dealt with that. You know, do we have overlap, overlapping coverage when we install these cameras? If you don't know what that is, basically it means cameras looking at cameras portion. And probably our sheriff down at the jail can probably give you an explanation what that is, because I'm sure he has it. And then the, and then the other issue is uh. Just want to make sure that uh. You know, they were looking, they were looking at things we're looking at and we're not signaling out a particular demographic with these cameras. I think some of you who has been here has heard my comments about the homeless inherent. I don't think I'm going to go down that path. We definitely want to catch the people who are causing Adrian a lot of money vandalism. Not seemingly not. Know it's, I know it's a lot of money, talking about putting cameras outside. We're either talking about fiber optic cables or. And even wireless, which they come with some reoccurring revenue that you can't get rid of. Be there every year, so we got to make sure all these things are vested in. I I put in high dollar systems. And I just want to make sure that we're not throwing away money based on we don't have enough money to.
I'll speak to that issue too. Julie Namery, eleven eighty-three, Wendell Avenue, ninety three. Um I've already talked with the commissioners about some of my concerns. I did some research. And see what, to see what the information has been, that people have developed who don't sell the camera systems. Um the thing that probably concerns me most, other than making sure we are going to get our money's worth. Is that we involve community partners to get their input specifically about what's happening. What they think is the re, are the reasons that it might be happening to. And what their ideas are for reducing the vandalism. One, because people have good ideas and somebody else you talk to has an idea that you haven't thought of, so I think it's really useful that way. Um the other reason is that whenever we install whatever we install, we're going to have people who feel like, that's my system. I helped with developing that. I want to make sure that works. If people are messing with those cameras, I I feel some ownership of that too. And I feel comfortable with whatever the process is afterwards. Charges are filed or changes are made or something like that. I know why that happened. And I know who to talk to about it too. So I think it's really good for the community to be involved in this. It's a big deal when we're telling you about surveilling people. And there are, I know there are people who will think it's, you know, it's all going to be the government um looking in your business. Well, it sort of is. They would have to make sure that we're doing it for the, for the, which I know you need to do, but I just wanted to say that. Thank you.
Hearing no more public comment inside the city chambers, we will now open it up to Zoom participants. Hearing no public comment. May I get a motion to adjourn? All in favor, say aye. Meeting is adjourned and we will begin in the, out there in the chambers. As seven o'clock, you like that?
Yeah, that's right. That's us.
I call to order the Adrian City Commission meeting for March fourth, two thousand and twenty-four. If everyone would please rise for a moment of silence and the pledge of allegiance.
Mayor Heath.
Present.
Commissioner Banky.
Present.
Commissioner Schwartz.
Present.
Commissioner Roberts.
Present.
Commissioner Miller.
Present.
Commissioner Castleberry.
Present.
Commissioner Gauss.
Present.
All commission members present.
May I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Support.
I have a motion from Commissioner Banky with a second from Commissioner Castleberry. Roll call, please.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Commissioner Banky.
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Commissioner Castleberry.
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss.
Yes.
Approved by unanimous vote.
May I get a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
So moved.
Support.
I have a motion from Commissioner Banky with a second from Commissioner Roberts. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Banky.
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Commissioner Castleberry.
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Approved by unanimous vote.
Moving on to our regular agenda under resolutions. Resolution R twenty-four dash zero zero five is from engineering. It is a resolution to establish S A D number three ninety-nine. May I get a motion to adopt the resolution?
Move to adopt the resolution.
Are there any public comments in regards to this resolution? Are there any commissioner comments in regards to this resolution?
This was the one that was tabled last time.
Correct. We have a motion from Commissioner Roberts with a second from Commissioner Gauss. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Schwartz.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Commissioner Castleberry.
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Commissioner Banky.
Yes.
Approved by unanimous vote.
Resolution R twenty-four dash zero zero eight is from utilities. It is a resolution to extend W W T P biosolids removal contract.
Move to adopt the resolution.
It's from wastewater, sorry. It's wastewater treatment plant. I was just reading the resolution exactly how it's written, sorry. May I get a motion to adopt the resolution?
Move to adopt the resolution.
Support.
Are there any public comments in regards to this resolution? Are there any commissioner comments in regards to this resolution? We have a motion from Commissioner Castleberry with a second from Commissioner Miller. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Commissioner Castleberry.
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Commissioner Banky.
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz.
Yes.
Approved by unanimous vote.
Resolution R twenty-four dash zero zero nine is from utilities. It is a resolution to extend water treatment plant, lime residential. I can't even talk today. Residual, I'm sorry about this. It's been a long day. Removal contract. May I get a motion to adopt the resolution?
Move to adopt the resolution. Support.
Are there any public comments in regards to this resolution? Are there any commissioner comments? I have a motion from Commissioner Roberts with a second from Commissioner Castleberry. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Commissioner Castleberry.
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Commissioner Banky.
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Approved by unanimous vote.
Resolution R twenty-four dash zero ten is from community development. It is a resolution to appropriate funds for the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority. May I get a motion to adopt the resolution?
So moved.
Support.
Are there any public comments in regards to this resolution? Are there any commissioner comments? We have a motion from Commissioner Miller with a second from Commissioner Gauss. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Castleberry.
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Commissioner Banky.
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Approved by unanimous vote.
At this time, we will have general public comment. We will first begin inside the city chambers. There is a three minute time limit, which you will see on the screen. And for the record, please state your name and full address when approaching to speak into the podium. After we have exhausted all public comment within the city chambers, we will then open it up to Zoom participants.
Tom Fallhaber, four nineteen Budlong Street in the city. Reason I'm coming down here is I was reading the minutes of the city commission meeting in the Adrian Daily Telegram and much of my dismay. I, I have to say we're done a lot of nice renovations downtown here of the larger cities of Michigan. I don't think anybody's beat us for, we've probably spent thirty million bucks downtown here on some wonderful renovations downtown. This, most of our downtown is in historic district, unbeknownst to most of the people in this city. It's the downtown Adrian Commercial Historic District. It's not federally listed, but it is a historic district. But I was dismayed to see that they were proposing tearing down one sixteen to one twenty South Main. The city's had control of that property for, I believe, about six years or more. And I wonder why it's been allowed to get into the condition it's in. I, I talked to Commissioner Gauss and he was gracious enough to call me back right away. And rather than getting all over everybody, I thought, well, just come down here and speak to everybody else in person. And I don't know why the city has owned this for so long, why it's been allowed to get in the condition it's in. Because I'm understanding from Commissioner Gauss that buildings aren't in good condition. And it's a shame we've torn down so many buildings downtown here largely due to fires and things like that. And I don't know why the city hasn't done something about this building before this. And I think of the Gene Christopher building, that building, I was shocked when I went on the roof of the building next door to that, when Mayor Jim Barryman and I and a couple of media people went on the roof of that building and looked down on that Gene Christopher building. That was, I, what I saw was forty to fifty years of deterioration, market deterioration. And I wonder where the city had been all these years, all those years at that point. Back when I was a commissioner, back in the eighties, the fire department initiated inspection, a voluntary inspection program with downtown businesses. And, and they went in a lot of buildings downtown and the premise of it was to probably head off the potential for fires. We'd had a couple of bad fires downtown here. Most notably the Lenoy Hotel, that was a big fire. It took out a big chunk of downtown over here. And I, I just wonder where the code enforcement people are. I mean, I, I don't, I'm not happy though. There's not enough being done here with the blight here. I've been one of the champions of blight in this town. And I just wonder why more isn't being done. I'm not very happy. I think I know where the problem is and some of you do too, but I'm not going to say publicly what I'm thinking. But there's another building. When I went up on the roof of that building next door to the former Gene Christopher building, I was shocked by the condition of the third floor of that W A B J M building. You want to find another building that's going to be torn down, you better have code enforcement get in that building. That was six, seven years ago. Whoever owns it's not keeping it up. It's pretty shocking to go up in there. That's another little for your information type of thing there. So anyway, I just wanted to make my comments about it because I'm concerned about what happens in the city. And I love, I love the historic restorations we've done here, but tearing down historic buildings is not, it's not the way to move forward with the city. So thank you.
Aaron Trescher, one twenty-seven Chandler Street. I wanted to bring up something that was mentioned a few meetings ago. Uh, the topic was something that directly pertain to the safety of the public. Given the things that I've said while speaking to this commission in the past, it feels wildly unsafe to have to say my full street address every time I want to talk about something that I'm concerned about. While you are a kind commission and usually so are the people sitting in the gallery. This is recorded and then posted on YouTube. It's not safe for those in my community to have to do that and for us to be heard. I think it's something that needs to change. So please consider doing that. Thanks.
Are there any public comments on Zoom? Hearing no public comment. Are there any commissioner comments? Commissioner Banky.
March twenty-first is a busy day. Starting seven thirty in the morning till nine A M. Lenaway now is going to be hosting for one Lenaway. Corey Mays, Corey's from the city of Jackson. He's going to be talking about the one hundred homes program. For those of you that went to the N double A C P dinner, the mayor there spoke about that program. So that's March twenty-first. There's limited seating, so keep that in mind. There'll be information, I know, emailed to all of us coming up soon. Next, there is a community book talk that's taking place that night. It's going to take place from six P M. to seven thirty P M. It's going to be through Zoom and that's posted on the county's website. This is part of the opioid settlement funds that the county has to raise awareness about the opioid and meth epidemic that's out there. It's a book that's. and meth epidemic that's out there. It's a book that's written, the preventable epidemic written by Dr. Gupta, who is a doctor in Monroe and he has a lot of insight just from not only the small town local Michigan lens, but also from the treatment lens because he is an addiction specialist. Also, if you're looking for teacher or administrator continuing education units, those will be provided for this as well. And it does lend itself to further conversation from this commission because there is at this point, a hundred and ninety two thousand dollars that's allocated to the city of Adrian as part of our opioid settlement funds. And there is, once the Supreme Court's rules this session on the bankruptcy of one of the opioid manufacturers, potential another three to five trillion or billion dollars coming out in settlement funds that we would be privy to as part of that potentially. So much further conversation, I hope that we can, as we talk about parks and we talk about needles found in parks and addiction and individuals using in our parks, that we have some conversation of how we can address that with treatment and community intervention as well. Thank you.
March is a month of many recognitions, but I just want to highlight, it's, it's not a proclamation. It's just something that I, I know that this community has really embraced and and does a lot for those with developmental disabilities and March is developmental disabilities month. And I really thought the Adrian Dominican Sisters shared a really great statement about the developmental disabilities month about just saying that we need to promote a more inclusive society by fostering empathy, breaking down stereotypes and recognizing the diverse abilities and talents of people with developmental disabilities. So just keep that in mind as we go through the month of March and, and recognize that and just celebrate many of those great areas within our community where that is happening, but look for areas where we can be more inclusive and, and bring in the people with developmental disabilities and celebrate them. May I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Support.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.